Good evening. I would like to call the March 28, 2016 Belbrook City Council Meeting to Order. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Edwards?
Here.
Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mrs. Middlestutter?
Here.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson is absent. Deputy Mayor Schweller?
Here.
Mayor Baird?
Here. May I have a motion to excuse Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
I'll make a motion to excuse Mrs. Seager-Lawson.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Motion by Mr. Edwards to excuse Mrs. Seager-Lawson, seconded by Mrs. Middlestutter. Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestutter?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Formal approval of City Council Work Session and Regular Meeting Minutes of March 14, 2016. Does any member on council have any corrections or additions to the regular City Council meeting minutes of our last meeting?
None, Mayor.
None.
None, Mayor.
Seeing none, the minutes are approved as written. Mayor's announcements. We have two things on the agenda this evening. We are getting very close to filling up all our boards, and so we have two people to take the oath of office this evening. And so I will have you guys come up here, and I will square you guys in, and you'll get to sign. And we're gonna start with Mr. Day and then Mrs. Greenwood. I would like to thank both of you very much for volunteering. We have a lot more boards than people probably think, and sometimes it's tough to keep all those boards filled. I think after one more interview our committee did tonight, I think there will be no vacancies, hopefully, for a while. So I'd like to thank both of you very much for volunteering your services. And with that, Mr. Day. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, James Day,
I, James Day.
solemnly swear,
solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution
I will support the Constitution.
of the United States
of the United States.
and the Constitution
and the Constitution.
of the State of Ohio
of the State of Ohio.
and will obey
and will obey
the laws thereof
the laws thereof.
and that I will
and that I will.
in all respects
in all respects.
uphold and enforce
uphold and enforce.
the provisions of the Charter
provisions of the Charter.
and the ordinances
and the ordinances.
of Belbrook
of Belbrook.
and will faithfully discharge
and will faithfully discharge.
the duties of the office
duties of the office.
upon which
upon which.
I'm about to enter.
About to enter.
Congratulations. Thank you very much. I just need a signature, sir? All right. Thank you very much. And that's for the Village Review Board. And then next, we have one more person for the Village Review Board. Mrs. Greenwood. Please raise your right hand. I, Jaclyn E. Greenwood,
I, Jaclyn E. Greenwood.
solemnly swear
solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution
that I will support the Constitution.
of the United States
of the United States.
and the Constitution
and the Constitution.
of the State of Ohio
of the State of Ohio.
and will obey the laws
and will obey the laws.
thereof
thereof.
and that I will
and that I will.
in all respects
in all respects.
uphold and enforce
uphold and enforce.
the provisions
the provisions.
of the Charter
of the Charter.
and the ordinances
and the ordinances.
of Belbrook
of Belbrook.
and will faithfully discharge
will faithfully discharge.
the duties of
the duties of.
the office upon
the office upon.
which I'm about to enter.
I'm about to enter.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, thank you both very much again, and I appreciate greatly. And I'm not sure, do we have any meetings set up for the Village Review Board yet?
Uh, no, I don't believe so. It's just as things come along.
As need.
As needed.
As needed. Moving on, that is all I have for Mayor's announcements this evening. We have one public hearing of ordinance, ordinance number 2016-3. Mr. Edwards?
Yes, Mayor. Ordinance number 2016-3, an ordinance amending certain sections of the city of Belbrook zoning code to include regulations for transient rentals. Whereas the city of Belbrook has identified a need to regulate transient rentals in the city based on an immediate and direct threat to public safety, and whereas the city of Belbrook has determined the need to regulate transient rentals to protect property values and the character of the city's residential neighborhoods, and whereas the city staff recommended amendments to the Belbrook zoning code relating to transient rental regulations, and whereas the Belbrook Planning Board concluded or conducted a public hearing on those amendments to the Belbrook zoning on January 13, 2016, and whereas the Belbrook Planning Board unanimously approved the amendments and recommended adoption by city council, and whereas all amendments to the zoning code must be approved by ordinance. Now, therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby ordains Section 1, that the following amendments to the Belbrook zoning code be approved with deletions shown by brackets and strike-through and additions shown by italics and underlined. Article 3, Construction of Language and Definitions, Section 3.02, Definitions: Transient occupancy means the right to use, occupy, or possess the use, occupancy, or possession of the following: dwelling unit, dwelling, one-family dwelling, two-family, or a dwelling, multiple-family, or a portion of any of the aforementioned for a period of 25 consecutive calendar days or less. Transient rental means the renting, letting, subletting, leasing, or subleasing of a dwelling unit, a dwelling, one-family, dwelling, two-family, or a dwelling, multiple-family, or a portion of any thereof for transient Article 5, in districts R-1AA, R1A, R1B, One Family Residential Districts, Section 5.01, Intent. These districts are the most restrictive of the residential districts. The purpose and intent is to provide for an environment of predominantly low-density, single-unit dwellings, plus certain other facilities which serve the residents living in the district, and to regulate transient occupancy within the city to protect and preserve the permanency of residential neighborhoods, protect property values, ensure that the comfort and safety of the residents. Section 5.09, Transient Rental Regulations: No dwelling unit or dwelling, one-family, or a portion of any thereof in the R1AA, R1A, or R1B district shall be used as a transient rental. Article 2, R2, Two Family Residential District, 6.01, Intent. The purpose and intent of this district recognizes the existence of older residential areas of the municipality where larger houses have been or can be converted from single-family to two-family residences in order to extend the economic life of these structures and allow owners to justify the expenditures for repairs and minorization. This district also allows the construction of new two-family residences where slightly greater densities are permitted. This article also regulates transient occupancy within this district and protects and preserves the permanency of residential neighborhoods, protects property values, and ensures the comfort and safety of the residents. Section 6.09, Transient Rental Regulations: No dwelling unit or dwelling, two-family, or a portion of any thereof in the R2 district shall be used as transient rental. Article 7, R-3, Multi Family Residential District, Section 7.01, Intent. The purpose and intent of this district is to allow construction of apartment buildings and condominiums and to regulate transient occupancy within the district to protect, preserve, the permanency of the residential neighborhoods, protect property values, and ensure the comfort and safety of the residents. Section 7.09, Transient Rental Regulations: No dwelling unit or dwelling, multi-family, or a portion of any thereof in the R3 district shall be used as transient rental. Article 17, Plan Development, Section 17.01, Purposes, 6, Number 6, To Regulate Transient Occupancy Within Residential Districts to Protect and Preserve the Permanency of Residential Neighborhoods, Protect Property Values, and to Ensure the Comfort and Safety of the Residents. Section 17.05, PD1, Plan Residential Development, Section, Part 14, Transient Rental Regulations: No dwelling unit or dwelling, one-family, dwelling, two-family, or dwelling, multi-family, or a portion thereof in the PD1 district shall be used as a transient rental. Section 2, This Ordinance Shall Take Effect and Be Enforced From and After the Earliest Period Provided by Law.
Yes, this is a proposed amendment to the zoning code. This did, as was mentioned, go to the Planning Board on January 13, and the Planning Board had a public hearing and recommended these amendments to city council. What this language does, really, it provides two definitions. The first is the definition of transient occupancy, which basically says a rental, if it is for a period of less than 25 calendar days, is considered a transient occupancy, and then defines a transient rental, that is anything that meets the definition of transient occupancy. And then further, it goes into the specific articles within the zoning code to state where transient rentals are not permitted, which would be your single-family, two-family, multi-family, and planned development residential districts. So effectively, what this does is eliminates transient rentals in residential zoning districts. That was the intent of it. This proposed language was initiated after a complaint was received by a resident about a property that was next to them that had been listed on Airbnb for rental, had been rented on multiple occasions for weekends or short periods of times, and there were some issues that were created with those rentals. We consulted with the municipal attorney. They drafted this language. Really, what it is, and the first sentence really states it, is there's a direct threat to public safety. There's also a threat of decreased property values based on these transient rentals. So what is before you tonight is language that would basically disallow those type of transient rentals going forward on any properties within the community.
Thank you. So this is a public hearing. We'll start first with council to hear what they, questions or concerns they may have. Then we will open up to the public. The public will have five minutes, and you'll need to say your name and address somewhere you live. So with that, we'll start with any input on council. I know we talked a little bit about this in work session, but if anyone wants to give input.
Are there any parts of the city where our zoning code would have this sort of property use as being acceptable?
I suppose in any of the business zone properties, this would not apply. Those were specifically not named there. So if any of those, you would be able to have it there. Now, there may be other reasons that you couldn't have it in those areas based on the use and things like that, but they're not covered in this regulation. This was specifically intended for the residential districts, again, as the public safety aspect of who is renting the property next to you. You know, there's some expectation if it's a longer-term rental. We have a lot of rental properties in the community, but they're longer-term rentals, and there's some expectation that you'll know who they are, at least you know who the owner is and who's renting that. You know, we all know that those could end up being short-term, not by anyone's fault, but just because of the way things work. But this is intended to eliminate the short-term transient rentals in residential districts.
Mark, was there any thought in terms of, I mean, I think I get the, you know, single-family and even two-family, the multi-unit residential district. And I know it's not like we have a lot of that, but I was curious if there was any discussion, at least at the zoning board, around that.
There was not. I think it was just more of a blanket, anything that is residential, this was gonna be covered by that.
Okay.
I guess, you know, I would sort of have a little bit of that same concern. You could see Mill Pond being a corporate venue where you could, you know, a company would come in and lease a vacant apartment, furnished apartment for two weeks, and, you know, I know my company does it when you're, you know, transitioning people, but...
Right. So this would effectively prohibit Mill Pond from doing that?
I think it would, yes. I guess it depends on what that arrangement is, if they are just leasing it for two weeks.
They're typically gonna be hotels that are set up for long stay. They're not...
Probably 30 days at least, or something like that.
Well, hotels are set up for, I mean, anything from two weeks. You know, they have full efficiencies. You can go in, stay. I think they're out by them all, the ones we've used in the past, but...
But if a company leased a room in Mill Pond, or an apartment in Mill Pond, it would be leased to that company, not the individual staying there? So I'm not sure that...
Well, we don't. We would reimburse you.
So the individual would lease it?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, but here, I think, the definition, the key is the 25 days, right?
Correct.
So if someone were gonna lease it for a month, that's fine. That's okay. We're talking here about
Two weeks, yeah.
You know, two weeks, three weeks.
I think it's unlikely. I think the real issue is the residential homes.
What do you do in a case of, like, a company maybe leases it for a year and has, let's say, it's an airline, and they rotate pilots in every two weeks, every week?
Every night.
Every night. Where you have a volume of people. That's basically what the intent of the law is, to stop...
And that would be a case particularly if it was, let's just say it was owned by a company, whatever, an airline, and they were letting their employees use it. There's not going to be a lease arrangement there that they're going to charge the tenant necessarily. So it's going to be, it's not gonna fall under this.
That would go wrong.
But you're right. It does sort of go against the spirit of what we're trying to solve here, because you could have that in a number of different situations and different arrangements where, you know, we're focusing on the, you know, the short-term rental sites, the Airbnb, the VRBO, those type of things, but there could be other arrangements out there that wouldn't be covered by this, that you would have the same transient population coming in and out.
Military would be, I think they're also rare, but it is, I mean, if you wanna talk theory, it's theory.
There's a need for that type of accommodations for people who are in an area, short-term, for work or something. I think they tend to be a little bit more inclined to go to the hotels that are set up for long-term.
Yeah. It hasn't been an issue yet, but it probably would be. This wouldn't cover it, so. Ms. Schweller?
Do other cities have similar legislation like this around us as far as some of our neighbors? I know this is kind of a new concept, or...
When I inquired of our neighboring communities, no one has enacted this type of legislation at this point.
It's something fairly recent. It's not a long-term...
What I found in, there are communities in Ohio I knew, I think it was Sandusky, and again, it's a different, you know, population because of the amusement parks and the lake and things like that, but they had put some prohibitions in place. Certainly in the bigger cities, it's, you can see either side. Some bigger cities have banned it. I think New York City has basically banned this type of thing because of, probably from taxes being one of the primary reasons, things like that.
Rec control.
And then other places have embraced this because it's a way to get people to come to their tourism draw, if you can go there and do that. So it's sort of a mixed bag of what people have or have not done. But to my knowledge, no one in our immediate area has enacted any legislation.
I mean, I guess I've never thought of Belbrook exactly as a vacation Mecca, so I'm not, you know, I didn't, I guess I hadn't really thought about this being an issue to this...
And I think just from what I've found, and you can go on, and you can find this property on Airbnb, and you can read the reviews, and you can find people that were here for the Air Force Marathon, maybe they're in town for a wedding. Unfortunately, I think the incident that really sparked some of this was a college-type party over a weekend, and that's really sort of what caused the beginning of this to happen. In a lot of cases, you may not know that somebody's, the neighbors are gonna know. They know the cars that come and go from properties. They know things like that. But in a lot of cases, it's, there's no issue. But when there is, you know, that's when they've turned to us to address this.
What other remedies? I mean, I know we have the noise ordinance and that calling the police to squelch issues that are happening. Are those strong enough to answer this question without prohibiting the use of, varied use of your property?
I think they are in some ways. I think you can, you know, if you contact the police, I mean, our police force is fairly responsive, and they would come out, they would speak to the people on their property. And that doesn't matter whether it's a transient rental or just a, you know, a loud party. I mean, it's a homeowner, it's a long-term rental, whatever it is, they'll come out, they'll speak to that party, they'll probably give them a warning, say, you know, turn the music down, do whatever the issues are. And, you know, if it's not resolved, they'll come back within a period of time, and then they'll probably take further action. So from that perspective, yes. But from the typical rental where maybe you just don't know who's coming and going from your neighborhood, you don't know who belongs and who doesn't belong?
Yeah.
That type of thing, yeah, the police aren't really, they can't handle that. They don't know that anymore than the neighbors do. So I think from the situation of a loud party or a lot of people maybe at a house that, you know, have sort of overwhelmed the neighborhood or the street, yes, they can address it. The routine visits, probably not so much.
There's only been one incident? Or have there been multiple incidents?
There's one that I'm aware of that has sort of risen to that level.
And I think I'm a little bit torn on two things. One is it's, you know, sort of taking a property right away that when the person bought the house had. I think that you obviously can have a rental next to you, and that can also diminish your property value. And they can also have parties all the time. If you get one bad renter who's in there for two or three years, it would be a nightmare, or for that matter, a homeowner. So I guess I'm a little bit torn. So with that, this is a public hearing, so if anyone in the audience would like to get up, you will have five minutes and can give input. And... And what is your name, ma'am?
Sandra Greenwood, 42 Southwest Street. I just had a comment. The 25 days, in other words, you're saying if it's under 25 days, they can't rent the property, right? Well, can't you get around that easily by saying between the person that's renting the property to the people that are renting it? They come in, all they have to say is, technically, we're gonna put you down for 30 days. So they come in, they live there a week or two, they leave, and all the landlord has to say is, oh, they left early.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of ways like that that could be.
There's all those ways around things.
I think, in my mind, the biggest issue is you should never have that issue next door to you, no matter if it's a rental property, a residential homeowner, or anything else.
But that's a roll the dice with anything, you know. So I'm just kind of throwing it out there. There are ways that they're still gonna be able to do that.
Sure. And it's the same way as if a company bought that house and owned it year-round and let people come in and out.
Yeah, and there's, I know I've seen a commercial on T's at HomeAway, where they trade houses.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, you know, you trade a house, usually you're not gonna stay more than a month or two, and you're gonna head off, you know. So, I mean, that's another thing to think about. It's kind of a ongoing popular thing right now. And I don't know how popular it is in Belbrook, but, you know, just throwing it out there. I mean, there are ways around it.
I would probably be more concerned if it was more popular. I know I personally have used the VRBO, and I'm guessing someone else on this council has. I've rented houses at numerous places, and they are residential houses. Now, they're not cheap. In Siesta Key, I've rented in Venice, and they're brick ranches, just like the one I live in, except it happens to be, you know, 100 yards from the water.
A lot of people, they don't like the hotel motel. They like to have a house they can go to and relax.
And I'm sure Florida's very open to it because of the large majority of their revenue. Now, do you get hotel tax or not? Like today, you know, were we getting any kind of...
Yeah, and we wouldn't anyway. But in Florida, you know, even if they don't get the hotel tax, they're getting the sales tax from, you know, the people being there as opposed to being somewhere else. So I think that's maybe different.
I saw it coming up.
Well, thank you very much.
Good evening. How are you guys?
Good.
My name is Jeremy Mudd, and I live at 2118 South Lakewood, and we live next door to the Airbnb house. I'll give you just a go over a few things that we've been able to experience since this began at the end of the summer last year. Since that, since we figured out what was going on at the house, which took us quite a while to figure out what was happening next door, we estimate that there have been at least 35 different groups of guests that have stayed in the house for days as short as one night or as long as two weeks. The house constantly has people coming and going. While the majority of the guests have been fairly well and have kept to themselves, we've had several occasions of problems there at the house. One in particular was the rather large college frat party that happened in September. During that weekend party, we had lots of foul language, breaking glass, people wrestling on the yard, lots and lots of cars coming and going. It's something that you just don't expect living in a residential neighborhood. We have issues with trash constantly. The person who owns the house does not have a hard trash container large enough to contain the trash that's created from all the comings and goings. So there are raccoons and neighborhood dogs that are constantly getting in the trash every morning. It's become almost a regular happenstance that I'm cleaning trash off of our driveway or yard. I'm kind of at the point where I'm so tired of it that I'm just kicking it back into the yard of the house next to us. And it's just something not very pleasant to live with. The house is also a non-smoking house per their website, and they don't really even want them to throw their butts in their yard or on their back porch, so consequently, they all stand at our property line. The guests smoke, and we end up with cigarettes dotting our yard. We care quite a bit about our yard, and picking up somebody else's nasty cigarette butts is just not very enjoyable. We feel that regardless of whether or not any of the guests have been an issue, something like this, which is a de facto hotel, does not belong in a residential neighborhood. You know, we've lived here since 2001. We're proud to call Belbrook home. Had we known that we were going to be living next door to a hotel in 2001, I can say that we would not have moved into the house that we're in now. And I greatly appreciate the council taking this into consideration, and I hope that you consider passing 2016-3.
So you have five minutes, but if anyone has any questions, it's not like we're gonna have a lot of people tonight.
Yeah, Mr. Mudd, first of all, thank you for coming in.
I'm sure some of you asked questions.
Giving us your insight, and, you know, that's very helpful. You said several occurrences, and it sounds like we've heard about the big one. I think you had mentioned one occurrence.
Yeah.
I mean, what's kind of been the nature of some of the other ones?
Well, we've had another incidence where there were some construction workers in town for about a two-week period. I don't know where they were working, but there were somewhere between six and eight of them staying in this three-bedroom house. And they were very loud. They were having what looked like pretend fistfights in the backyard at one point, where they were sparring with each other. They moved the television from the inside of the house out onto the back deck when a rather large football game was going on. There was quite a bit of yelling and screaming and cursing. We were out on our deck trying to enjoy a nice evening, and we went over and asked them to keep it down, and they were quiet for a short while, and then it elevated from there. And we've had plenty of other instances like that of guests being very loud, very rowdy, coming and going at all hours of the night. Our house is actually fairly quiet, and the fact that it's very well insulated with new roof and new windows, and our bedroom is on the other side of that house, so we shouldn't really know what's going on. But there are many times in the middle of the night that I hear people outside yelling and screaming and cars coming and going. It just has not been pleasant. We did contact the owner of the house through Airbnb. There is no very easy way to contact them, but we did go on there and sign up on Airbnb and contacted them through their RentMe portion of the website and explained to them what was going on, and we were told to mind our own business. So we did try to come up with some other alternative or work with them, but they weren't interested.
Any other questions on council?
Mr. Mudd, have you had the police involved at all?
No, we have not. We try to really only call the police when it's something that's really important. We did have a peeping tom and an attempted break-in into the cars many years ago. We called them for that, but for something like this, we normally wouldn't. I would imagine if it was really bad...
Yeah, we would call them, but not yet.
Other questions? I don't have any other ones. Thank you very much for
Thank you.
coming out and also giving us some more insight. Any further discussion before I close the public hearing?
How is this going to, I know we, this was approached, how is... How is this going to, I know we, this was approached, how is passing this tonight going to help this particular situation?
Uh, i- if we pass this, once it becomes effective, we'll, we'll notify the property owner that we've passed a regulation that, uh, does not permit, um, this type of transient rental in a residential district. Um, we'll, we'll contact them via property tax records and reach out to them that way. Um, I don't know that we'll have, you know, any more success than, uh, than Mr. Mudd did, but, uh, that, that's what we'll do. And then we'll, uh, we'll sort of take it from there based on what, whatever response we get at that point.
What would we do if he had long-term leases or contracts with someone already having it leased outside the, within the timeframe of the ordinance? And then two, did we, did we notify them? I know we legally probably notified them. Um, did they get a letter or did they?
No, they would not have because this is not a rezoning or anything like that. So it's not like, yeah. So this is just a, it was a zoning code amendment that then, so it's the same public, public hearing that everyone, you know, in the community knows about. So, uh, that's the only way. We did not make specific contact. Uh, if he had, I, I would, I would guess that if he had a longer-term contract or one that's out for a future date, that we would, we would work with them, uh, to the best of our abilities to, uh, to do that, but...
We, we may not even know this. It, it, is the owner local? Does the owner live in the area?
I believe he lives in Xenia is my understanding, but I, I don't know that for a fact.
Yeah, it would be other tax, tax mailing, I'm sure. Um, any other questions before I close the public hearing? Any other comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, I close this public hearing. May I have a motion to approve ordinance number 2016 dash three? Just because you say you want to, uh, approve it, doesn't mean you got to say yes at the second go-around.
We have to vote on it.
So I, I need a motion to approve first.
Well, I'll, I'll make a motion that we, that we, I guess we introduce or approve ordinance number, uh, 2016 dash three.
This is approved because we already did introduce it last time.
Okay.
So this is the...
And then I need a second.
I'll second it.
Roll call. Uh, no, this is a public hearing. It's approved. Approved. I always get that messed up too. Ordinances are...
Motion by Mr. Edwards to approve ordinance number 2016 dash three and ordinance amending certain sections of the City of Belbrook zoning code to include regulations for transient rentals, seconded by Mr. Edwards. Mr. Martin?
Uh, no.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
I don't matter again. Um, no. Motion passes and it's a rarity that we're ever split. That's the third time in 20 years. Uh, so the motion has been approved to, um, implement ordinance number 2016 dash three. Um, moving on, we have an introduction of ordinance this evening. Uh, this is an ordinance regarding, um, electric generation. I am going to recuse myself from this because it deals with, um, electric and I work for a natural gas company who also deals with these kinds of things. So I am going to turn this portion of the meeting up and I will leave the room to Deputy Mayor Schweller. Ms. Schweller?
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 2016 dash four and ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for electric generation supply with a competitive retail electric service provider. Councilwoman Middlestetter.
Yes, uh, thank you, Vice Mayor Schweller. Uh, ordinance number 2016 dash four and ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for electric generation supply with a competitive retail electric service provider. Whereas, the city is one of 24 municipalities currently participating in the Miami Valley Communications Council Electric Generation Supply Agreement with DPL Energy Resources, Inc., DPLER, for the provision of electric generation and transmission supply services through December 31, 2016, collectively referred to as the participating municipalities. And whereas, in accordance with the Public Utilities Commission of Ohio rules and regulations, the participating municipalities have the opportunity to maximize savings on the generation and transmission portion of their electric service costs through the selection of a competitive retail electric service provider. And whereas, the participating municipalities desire to seek competitive pricing for a new electric generation and transmission supply service agreement for municipal accounts. And whereas, the participating municipalities desire to authorize MVCC and its executive director to act as procuring agents, along with any consultant utilized by MVPCC, collectively the procuring agents, to seek collect competitive pricing for electric generation and transmission supply services. And whereas, the participating municipalities desire to authorize their respective city managers to enter into a new agreement with the lowest and best competitive supplier after the procuring agents have identified and recommended such supplier. And whereas, the city is authorized as a chartered municipality to exercise all powers of local self-government. Now therefore, the City of Belbrook hereby ordains section one, that MVCC and its executive director, along with any consultant utilized by MVCC, are hereby authorized to act as procuring agents to identify a competitive retail electric service provider for electric generation and transmission supply services. However, nothing in this ordinance shall authorize such procuring agents to contractually bind the city to accept or enter into an agreement with any such service provider or to otherwise bind the city. Section two, that the city manager is hereby authorized to execute an agreement and any other necessary documents on behalf of the city for electric generation and transmission supply services with a competitive retail electric service provider. Section three, that it is hereby found and determined that all formal, formal actions of this city council concerning and relating to the passage of this ordinance were taken in an open meeting of this council and that all deliberations of this council and any committees that resulted in those formal actions were in meetings open to the public in compliance with all special requirements, legal requirements. Section two, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law.
Yes, this is just introducing this ordinance, but, uh, what this effectively, um, does is allow us to participate in a group purchase of electric generation supply. We've done this for the past, uh, five or six years. Uh, obviously, being one of, uh, 24 cities, we get a, a little economy of scale by being part of that. Um, the, the real reason for the ordinance is, uh, and to basically authorize me to sign a contract when it comes is, uh, as they negotiate these, these, if they have to have a long-term, uh, timeframe before it's accepted by all, you know, everyone has to go back to the council and do that, then the price always goes up during that process. So this allows them to negotiate a contract, have everyone sign it within a very short period of time and we get the best rate. They started this process a little earlier than normal because right now, energy rates are at very favorable rates and this is the time to do it. So with this approval, they'll be able to negotiate and, uh, on our behalf and, uh, hopefully get a contract for three or four years of, uh, very good rates.
Great.
Mark, this is an opt-in program or?
This is only for the city. It's only for our municipal building. So it's not for the community or anything like that. It's just for municipal buildings. So the power to all our, our facilities are covered by this.
Mark, what would be involved in doing something like that where, where we could negotiate on behalf of the city to have a, an optional op, you know, an, an optional participation kind of program?
Uh, there's two, there's an opt-in and an opt-out. Uh, opt-in would be where we negotiate a contract and then if people chose to, they could, uh, piggyback on the contract on our behalf. Or the opt-out where we basically say, everyone's in unless you say differently.
Right, unless you tell us otherwise.
Yeah. Um, so there would be legislation that would have to come. There are brokers that could help negotiate those deals. Obviously, you get a better deal if it's an opt-out because then the bulk of people are in the program, uh, unless they specifically opt out. So you'll get a, a, a better rate. Um, we've talked about that previously with council. It, it really comes down to, uh, does council want to be making that decision, uh, for you? I know on the PUCO website, you can go and you can choose your energy provider today. Pick a deal, whether you want it to be a one-year deal or a three-year deal, whether you want it to be green energy, whether you want it to be something else. There's, I, I know for the DPL, there's probably 20 different options out there.
I mean, I, I guess I'm just curious, like, based on the rate reductions we see through something like this with Miami Valley Communications Council. I mean, would, you know, trying to project that out, would it potentially be worthwhile? In other words, you know, the city could get us as residents a rates better than any of us could get individually?
That, that's, that's an unknown because we just don't know. I know, uh, personally, I signed up for a contract through the PUCO and now the, the standard rate from DPL is less than what my contract is. Um, so it's all about timing and it's all about, um, knowing, trying to predict the future.
Right.
And I think the, the discussion that we've had previously is, okay, if we're making that decision for somebody and then that decision ends up being wrong, then we're going to be the ones, blame may be strong, but, uh, that they're going to point to that says, okay, well, you negotiated this and I could have got a better deal. So it's sort of the free-market concept. Yes, we have the economy of scale to potentially negotiate a good rate at that point in time. But we don't know is how, how long that rate is a, is a good rate.
Okay, just curious.
There are, I, I know Troy, the City of Troy just recently put one of these programs in place. Uh, sometimes they tie it to other things where they can get, uh, uh, maybe streetlights or other things out of, you know, or they can get a discount on their rates by doing a program like this, things like that. So it's out there. It's something that we can pursue if you'd like.
Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion of council? A little motion then for the introduction of ordinance 2016 dash four.
Yes, I move that we adopt ordinance number 216 dash four.
I'll second. Introduce.
Introduce.
Yeah.
Introduce, yeah.
Motion by Mrs. Middlestetter to introduce ordinance number 2016 dash four and ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for electric generation supply with a competitive retail electric service provider, seconded by Mr. Martin. Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Schweller?
Yes.
All right, I guess moving on?
Yep.
City managers report.
Yes, um, in your packet, I know we've talked about taglines here, uh, a lot. So what I had, I, I, there was a number of them that I got feedback from council. Uh, got some, uh, additional thoughts on. There were actually six of them that people had chosen, uh, over, over the course here. So what I asked the, uh, designer to do was to place those with the, with the logo. Obviously, that's a logo by itself, but I asked him to, uh, somewhere here, uh, place it, place the two here. So as you can see here, uh, this is, one of them is small-town friendly. So there's, there's actually four slides and the only difference is the font or the, you know, the, the font size or style there. So small-town friendly is one of them. This is what it would look like on, uh, on the sign there. Uh, or a place to call home is, is the second one that seemed to have, get multiple voices, votes during this process. Uh, again, this is just a different font with small-town friendly, uh, or a place to call home. So I just thought, seeing it in the whole thing, what, what, what my vision for this is that these taglines probably aren't going to go on every vehicle, every place we have the sign, but on the entrance signs, uh, when you come in the community, it'll probably be the primary place that you would see these, um, if we chose to do it. So I guess, again, just trying to, to seek some, some feedback here from council. Is there one that, I know, I know we haven't really had one yet that has just, uh, awed everyone and, and jumped out and said, this is the one. We can continue this. I, probably the one thing that this is sort of holding up is the, is the ordering of certain signs that, that we want to have. I, I really want to focus on the signs at the entrances of the city. Uh, we have a mishmash of those now. A lot of them are faded. Uh, there's no consistency to them, things of that nature. Um, but I don't want to do that if we're going to have a tagline or if we're not. So that's sort of where, where we fall. So I can move forward without a tagline if that's what we want. I can, uh, move forward with one of these taglines. We can hold off and talk about it more. We can, whatever your pleasure is.
Mr. Edwards? Well, I can start. I think we probably just, we probably need to make a decision.
Yeah, I agree.
Um, you know, my decision is, I actually, these two, I sort of, as far as tagline goes, I, I sort of like both of them. Probably small-town friendly first, place to call home second. Um, I don't have to have a tagline either, um, but that's just my opinion. But I think we need to get this done.
I like small-town friendly. And I, I think that...
And you like a tagline versus no?
I like a tagline.
Okay. Forrest?
I like the tagline.
And which one do you like?
Small-town friendly seems to be the one I always...
John Stewen, I can see it in his eyes.
Maybe I'm supposed to recuse myself. I like A1.
He, he's the one who suggested it. I'm afraid he already trademarked it or something.
Which one?
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking to get a nickel apiece off of it.
Okay.
Which one, you like small-town friendly?
Yeah, that was the one he came up with.
That's it.
Oh, well, I, let me take...
Yeah, change your vote.
I like the idea of a tagline and I like A1, small-town friendly with the smaller type font.
As opposed to A2, which is...
Yeah, the, the font's larger. I like the smaller.
All right, Mike, we don't matter now.
I'll go with the majority. I actually liked, uh, a place to call home a little bit better because it speaks more to our bedroom community atmosphere. And the small-town friendly, the only thing I thought about that is that a limitation that we always have to be a small-town? I don't know. At some point in time, you'd never know.
I think we're kind of stuck with that.
I think we're saying we're being a small-town.
There, there's options to change that. I mean, over time, and I guess at that point in time, you have heard of the tagline and then you change it, then you call it a big-town friendly or something.
It's going to be a long, it's going to be a long time.
The, the only thing about a place called home to me is every place can say that, right? I mean, to, to me, there was nothing distinctive about that. Because every place can be, is called home if you're from there.
Yeah, I, I think we made a decision.
More good with your copyrighted statement.
John Martin, you know, so. Small-town friendly it is.
Small-town friendly it is. Thank you. I'll get that off my desk and move on to...
Probably the hardest decision we've made all year.
Probably want to put more time on it.
So, so Mark, where, I mean, you, you talked about signs. You're talking about at the, at the city limits where we have the shield up now, we would replace it with something like this?
Yes. And even like on the, uh, like on the wagon wheels that the lines club have, that, those signs would be replaced with, with something like this. And at the entrance sign or at the entrance points to the city, the key ones, not, you know, there's a lot of different exit points, but the key ones, we'd, we'd replace those with this. Um, and there may be other places, but those are the things that, that jump off. I, I don't think we need it everywhere. We'll, we'll obviously include it in the website at certain locations, but I don't think it has to be on everything. We put the logo, but at the same time, uh...
We're going to have that in time for the Sherbrooke Apple Festival.
I don't think so. I don't think so. Okay, um, uh, next item, Hyview Terrace. Uh, I know at the last meeting, we had several of those residents. We do have, uh, it's not even been published yet. It will be here in the next few days, but, uh, we have set the public hearing on the revised preliminary plan for Hyview Terrace for Tuesday, April 12th at 6:00 PM, right here in council chambers. So everyone within Hyview Terrace will receive a notice. That's what we, they would have probably anyway, but we'll, we'll make sure that they get that. Uh, that'll be mailed out to them. Um, but that will be the discussion of the revised preliminary plan, a public hearing at the planning board. So at that point, the planning board will review it. They'll have the opportunity, uh, for public input, uh, and then based on their recommendation, it'll move forward to council at a, at a future date.
Did you say 6:00 PM?
6:00 PM, yes. April Tuesday, April 12th at 6:00 PM.
Okay.
Um, I mentioned, uh, in my memo to you that on, uh, the Sugar Creek Township has requested a joint meeting. We've, it's been probably a year, maybe a little bit longer since we had one of those. They requested one. Uh, they proposed a date of Monday, May 16th at 5:30. Uh, that's the meeting in between. They, they meet on the first and third Mondays. We meet on the second and fourth. So that's the, that's the third Monday. Uh, they have a meet, a regular meeting at 7:00 PM. Uh, so if, if council is fine with that, I'll move forward with getting that set up with, uh, Mr. Tiffany and we'll meet down...
5:30?
5:30, yes. Uh, we'll, we'll make sure everyone gets noticed, but that, it'll be 5:30 on May 16th down at the Sugar Creek Township Admin Building on Ferry Road. Um, and then finally, uh, at the last council meeting, uh, there was a resolution for the Marsh Drive culvert. Um, that was approved on a Monday. On that Friday, I got a call from the contractor that said if, if we can come up on Monday, we'll waive the mobilization fee and save us $1,500. Uh, they were able to come up. They were in and out within three days. Uh, we closed the road for them. We closed the road for them. They didn't really need the road closed. They didn't ask for the road closed. We just thought it would be easier and they, they certainly appreciated that. Uh, that location didn't really matter to have the road closed.
I was going to say, that diverted what, four cars?
Right, I mean, and there's enough ways around there. It's not a big deal. But they were in and out, did a great job, uh, and probably in the future, as we have more culverts that need to replace, we'll, we'll, we'll look to this company again. They did a, did an excellent job for us, so...
Great.
And it's done that quick, so we appreciate that. Uh, that is all I have this evening.
All right, committee report. Service?
Uh, no report.
That's Donna.
Yeah, Donna's in there.
Yeah, safety?
No report.
Finance and audit?
Uh, Mayor, nothing to report this evening.
You'll be happy when tax season's over?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Community affairs?
Yes, Mayor, um, we, as a committee, uh, interviewed a applicant for the museum board of trustees tonight, Arthur Neff, and we unanimously recommend his appointment to that board.
Do we need a motion?
Donna, I think that was a motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Motion by Mrs. Middlestetter to appoint Mr. Arthur Neff to serve on the historical museum board, seconded by Mr. Edwards. Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes.
Anything else, community affairs?
Nope, not tonight.
Is there any old business this evening, not on the agenda? New business? We have one thing on the new business this evening, motion to authorize bidding for the Upper Bel Brook Water Tower repainting project.
Yes, this is an item that was included in the two thousand sixteen budget. Uh, the, the water tower up there by, uh, the high school needs to be repainted, both interior and exterior. The bid specs have been prepared. Uh, we anticipate it costing around two, just over two hundred thousand dollars for this project, and we'll find out when the bids come in, but, uh, the bid specs are ready to go. Tentatively, if council authorizes us to go to bid, we'll have a bid opening in early May. We'd like to have this work done, uh, during the summer, when school's not in session, just to, just to get it done, um, during that timeframe. That's what, uh, that's what the bid specs call for. So, um, if we have this, we'll get an advertisement in the newspaper, get this out, and hopefully get some good bids.
May I have a motion to authorize bidding for Upper Bel...
Quick question. I know at, we had talked about the, uh, if we were going to put a logo back up or what our options were. Is, is that laid out in the bid separately?
Yes.
Okay.
So, so what, what the options in the bid are, uh, the, the price to put our logo up there once or twice, if we went in on multiple sides, and then I have a rendering of the eagle that I received from the school district to put on there also if we so chose. So, we're going to get prices for that. So, once those bids come in, that'll be part of the approval process to decide whether... But all of those, and, and we made, there's, there's several other things within the bids that are this way, too, but those, uh, it's very clear in there that these are options and we have the right to exclude them and the, the rest of the contract is not contingent upon everything being approved.
Good, good.
John, good question. Any other questions? Seeing now, may I have a motion to authorize bidding for the Upper Bel Brook Water Tower paint, repainting project?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schweller to authorize bidding for the Upper Bel Brook Water Treatment, Water Tower Repainting Project, seconded by Mr. Martin. Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes.
Open discussion.
Yeah, I just have one thing. Last Thursday or Friday, I can't remember which, there was a media article about a manhunt, a manhunt for someone breaking into cars. I guess I was wondering if they ever apprehended that person, or...
No, they did not. They, they, he broke into several cars, uh, up in the Locus Bend area up that way. Uh, they pursued him. He was actually on a bicycle. They, they pursued him on a bike. He abandoned the bike and the backpack and all this, the stuff, and he took off and he disappeared into the Sansucci property somewhere there. So, we did not apprehend him, but most of the property was abandoned and was returned to the, to the owner. So, although we have not caught him, we did, uh, we, we were able to return most of the property.
Were these cars actually broken into, or were they...
No, I believe that most of them were unlocked cars that, uh, had valuables or obviously, I think the bike was stolen, too, so that must've just been seen outside. Yeah.
Okay.
So, no, lock your, lock your car doors.
Lock your car, yes.
How often do we have to say it?
Anything else?
That's all I had. Mark, I had a quick question, kind of related to that. I had gotten an email, actually, from a friend in the neighborhood earlier this week about, um, there was maybe some people that were putting flyers on doors for tree trimming, and then they were coming back later, and if the flyer was undisturbed, that told them people, nobody was home.
Okay.
And they were trying to break into a house, or breaking into a house, or did break into a house, and I didn't...
Oh, okay, I, I don't know about that one specifically, but I, I know, I, that there's been several instances where we've known that, uh, solicitors have, uh, been in the neighborhoods and we've, we'll go out, if somebody notifies us, uh, that we'll go out, they have to get a permit from us...
Right.
...to solicit. So, if anyone, if there's an instance like that, just call the police, let them know, we'll, we'll come out, we'll talk to them. If, there are some legitimate cases where they get a, go through the process and they have the ability to solicit, but...
Right.
Nine times out of ten, they don't, and once we make contact with them, they'll leave and move on to another area.
Should they have their permit on their person when...
Yes, that is...
So, if it's a group with ten people, they should all have a copy of that permit?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, it's actually a picture ID that there's, to wear around their neck, so it's...
Because each person, each person has to have, you know, get run through a background check, so, yes. So, if, if there's any of that going on, please don't hesitate to contact the police and we'll come out and, and check, and if they're, if they're legitimate, then we'll, they'll go on their way.
Thank you.
Apparently, there's been, um, in another neighborhood from ours, um, a scam where people, similar to putting the flyers on the door, that, um, people with vans, looked like business vans, would knock on doors, and if nobody answered, then they would back up and look like they were working at a house, and, when they really weren't, and they were breaking in and, and stealing, so it's a...
There's a lot of ways for people...
So, it was basically a call for neighbors to be nosy and, and, you know, accepting, say, yes, please, if you see something like that going on, I, you know, they'd appreciate.
Are we starting up bike patrols anytime soon?
Uh, yes, I thought they, I saw the bike on the back of the car.
I seen the bike on the back.
Yeah, so, yes, it should be, uh, anytime here, uh, as weather permits, obviously, so...
Is there a possibility to do it night, or is it too dangerous?
They do.
They do it into the evening hours, but not...
Not at night, that's dangerous.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if they're equipped to have the lights and that. I'll, I'll have to check on that. You mean in the actual dark?
In the actual dark, when a lot of these car break-ins happen and when you're on a bike.
Yeah, you can be a little more stealthy.
You can be a little more stealthy and you can...
I, I will have to check. I don't know if they're equipped to ride in, in the actual dark, if they have the lights and the things that are required, they're not, so...
Ms. Middlestetter?
Oh, that was what I...
Ms. Schweller?
Uh, Mayor, just want to thank the citizens who have filled the boards. It seems like with, uh, the addition of Mr. Neff and Mr. Day and Mrs. Greenwood that we're filled up at capacity, and it's kind of nice to be there. I know it's a...
Yes.
A lot of involvement on community affairs to go through and get the process done, so congratulations in getting the boards all filled up again. Let's hope they stay that way.
Thank you. And I really don't have anything this evening. This is opened up to our audience. If anyone would like to come up, I see Louis taking off his glasses, our esteemed cameraman.
It's motorcycle season.
Probably, yeah. I'm Louis Schottberg. I live at forty-eight-two Ridgetop Drive, and, uh, also the cameraman. We've heard comments sometimes that people will say that city council doesn't listen. Tonight was another night that city council did listen to the citizens and did do the right thing that the citizens want. You know, I get tired of people saying, oh, the city council, I could come talk to them, but they don't listen. I've, personally, I've had, I think this is like the third, third time that this has happened, that I've been here, that you guys have listened to the residents and done what the residents want them to do, and, and I, and I think that's very important. And, um, you know, the city does a good job, I believe, if they know about it. The problem is, is if you guys don't know about it, you can't fix something that you don't know. My daughter went to, uh, lives up in Park Lane, and they went to the Park Lane City Council because the slide was broke. City manager had no idea that the slide was broke, so they said, okay. He says, thank you, and he'll fix it, you know, and it's things like that that make the community a better community, you know? And, and, you know, we do the best that we can, but we can only do it if we know how it's done, you know? And with the Marsha Drive culvert, that was pretty quick, because I usually walk my dog through there down towards John's house and, and that, and I was surprised at how quick that was, that was done, and seemed like we just talked about approving it, and the next thing you know, it's done. So, I, you know, I thought that was pretty good, about the road being closed and stuff, to make it safer back in there for, for the equipment and stuff and for the workers, so... Well, thank you.
Thank you very much, Louis.
Thanks, Louis.
Okay, we're going to be a hundred percent this evening. No rush, don't rush.
Good evening. Darrell McGill, three-eight-four-six, West Franklin Street.[1673.64]